Dominic Deereje, Mayor.
Before moving to consider the items on today's agenda, may I remind those present that this meeting is being recorded in accordance with the City Corporation's filming and recording protocol. And item one, the names of those members who have presented apologies for today's meeting have been recorded. At item two, does any honourable member have any additional interest to declare in respect of the items to be considered? At item three, starting on page seven, are the minutes of the last court. If I could draw honourable members' attention to one amendment that is required, which is that Alderman Christopher Makin should appear as being in attendance. Subject then to that correction, the question is that the minutes of the last court are correctly recorded, that is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. At item four, the right Honourable the Lord Mayor to report on his recent engagements.
Good afternoon, everybody. May I begin by warmly congratulating our newly-elected sheriffs for 2025/26, Alderman Robert Hughes-Penny and Keith Bottomley. Congratulations to both. Shortly after we met last, I travelled to Qatar, Kingdom of Saudi Arabia and the United Arab Emirates, strengthening key ties with our Gulf partners at a time when global trade rules are being rewritten. Back in London, I was delighted to attend the long-awaited reopening of Finsbury Circus Gardens, the Square Mile's largest public open space, and to take part in events showcasing the city's expertise in two key sectors as part of London International Disputes Week and London Tech Week. The Lady Mayoress and I took the city livery masters out of their comfort zone and northwards for their annual livery weekend, this time in Aberdeen. We welcomed the Foreign Secretary to Mansion House for the annual gathering of London's international diplomatic community on the 12th of June. We took the opportunity to think of those who have been affected by the Air India crash earlier that day, and I used my speech to highlight the city's status as a safe and neutral place to do business and to underline our continued commitment to open, fair and rules-based trade. I travelled to Finland and to Sweden to discuss opportunities for further collaboration in financial services in what is a crucial time for European relations. Also, ahead of the Financial and Professional Services Dinner on the 15th of July, I'm continuing to drum up support for the Employer Pension Pledge, a key employer-led commitment that complements the Mansion House Accord that we signed last month. On the 23rd of June, we put the city's green finance leadership on display with another hugely successful net-zero delivery summit. This afternoon, we will be joined by sporting royalty, as Olympian Sir Chris Hoy and his wife Lady Hoy, Sarah Kemp, are due to receive their freedom of the City of London. Keeping going with the sporting theme, tomorrow afternoon, I will take part in the inaugural Lord Mayor's Cup, a football competition in aid of the Lord Mayor's appeal. We have remarkable, strong teams from the City of London Corporation, the Lord Mayor's Office, plus also the Department of Business and Trade, and also the Mayor of London Office, plus also about 25 different banks and financial institutions throughout London. Next week, we will welcome some of the United Kingdom's high-growth tech startups to Mansion House, where they will be pitching directly with domestic investors as part of the Scale Up Showcase Event. We also, next month, have the honour to be hosting the President of France, President Macron, here at Guildhall, on a state occasion, his visit to the United Kingdom. And, as I've mentioned, the following week, we will see the Chancellor return to Mansion House for her second Financial and Professional Services Dinner. Thank you.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Under item five, there is no statement. Item six, then, concerns appointments to the committees and outside bodies. As members can see, there is only one uncontested nomination on today's summons, and so there is no need to conduct any ballots on this day. Accordingly, the Lord Mayor declares Alderman Simon Pryke to be appointed to the Pensions Committee as set out under paragraph A. At item seven, on page 23, is a report of your Finance Committee. Relating to the procurement of the Pan-London Sexual Health e-service, does any member wish to debate this particular item? Seeing none, that is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the report to be carried. At item eight, on page 29, is the list of applicants for the freedom. The motion is that the several persons named be admitted to the freedom accordingly, that is to agree. And on the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares this motion to be carried. At item 9A, is a motion submitted by Older Woman Martha Grecos concerning the bringing forth of proposals for the use of the city's estate assets in support of the renovation of housing estates. A reminder to all members that, understanding Order 12-6, a time limit of no more than 60 minutes is permitted for discussion on motions put forward by members. This time will commence when I invite the older woman to speak. I will provide updates throughout debate on how much time has been used. By way of reminder, and in accordance with standing orders, members can speak twice on this motion, except for the Policy Chairman, who can speak more than twice concerning any matters of policy to be clarified. The proposer of the motion has five minutes to make their initial speech and five minutes to close, and those contributing have three minutes on the first occasion and then two minutes on the second occasion they are called. It is incumbent upon you members to rise in your places if you are able, if you wish to speak, or otherwise indicate to myself and the town clerks here around me, as per standing order 11 subsection 2, else remain in your seats. When I do say please return to your seats, it's underpinned by a standing order 11 subsection 2. And finally, before we begin, a brief apology to Leila Ostavar, whose name, as one of the signatories to the motion, is misspelled in the printed document, so apologies, Leila. Older Woman Martha Grecos.
My Lord Mayor, on the night of 5th of December 2024, the members of our Policy and Resource Committee enjoyed a lavish dinner in a West End club, drinking red wine that retailed at £62 per bottle. At the same moment as these members were toasting themselves, tenants on many of the corporation's housing estates were wearing winter coats inside their flats to keep warm because their windows had not been replaced and their roofs and walls not insulated, after literally decades of neglect by the corporation. The corporation has a wealth fund now called City's Estate, in addition to its local authority and charitable funds. The latest accounts show that the City Estate has £2.7 billion of assets. That is real wealth, which the corporation seems to be obsessed with maintaining, but for what purpose? The corporation is not a private company with shareholders to benefit. It uses some of the City's Estate to fund its promotion of its financial city, although the financial city is easily able to fund its own promotion. And the corporation uses some of its City Estate to fund the dining, drinking and privileges of its members, including more than a third of a million pounds a year to provide free or subsidised lunches and drinks for them in the Guildhall Club, and further large amounts on committed dinners like the Policy and Resources one that I've just mentioned. This misspending scandalises those of the corporation's stakeholders who most need its support, namely its residents and small businesses. The corporation is a public authority, so its focus should be on the public, not on itself, and especially not on its members. So instead of hoarding and misspending its wealth, the corporation should be spending it for the public good. The motion before you aims to start that process. It provides for some, not all, of the wealth in the City's Estate to be applied in accelerating the renovation of the corporation's housing estates. The amounts that are ring-fenced from other locally authoritative funds and that can be used for this purpose are hopelessly inadequate. There's a shortfall of £84 million by the corporation's own reckoning, and it describes that figure as being at risk of optimism bias. The endless delays in applying the current inadequate funds increases the total amount that needs to be spent, as the estate falls into ever-worse dilapitation. This vicious spiral will continue unless arrested by major injection of cash, which can only come from the City's Estate. To members who object that liquidating investments in the City Estate to provide the cash needed would be selling the family silver, our answer is follows: the corporation is not a family, and the City Estate is not its silver. It is not a private fund in any normal sense of the word, as no private individuals or companies have an interest in it. It's a quasi-public fund, and we should apply to such. And if that results in the corporation being less wealthy, so what? There is no point in being wealthy for its own sake. When we vote on this motion at the end of the debate, each member will have a choice between two things. First of all, voting against it, which will mean that members will continue to have their dining, drinking and privileges funded out of the City's Estate, while refusing to let that fund be applied for the benefit of the public, or secondly, voting for the motion to let the City's Estate be applied for the benefit of the public as it should be. My Deputy Beth Coombs will censure this motion, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Older Woman Martha Grecos. Deputy Bethany Coombs, as the seconder of the motion, would you wish to speak?
Yes. My Lord Mayor, in seconding this motion, I will address arguments that have previously been made against using City's Estate to supplement the funding of housing estate renovation. It has been said that City's Estate is not used for local authority functions, implying that it cannot be used for those functions. But that implication is untrue. While there are legal restrictions on how the corporation uses its local authority and charitable funds, no one has been able to point to a law that restricts how it uses City's Estate. This is entirely a matter for members to decide. It has been said that the corporation's housing revenue account, which is part of the corporation's local authority fund dedicated to housing, is ring-fenced. It is, in the sense that the law prevents money being taken out of this account to fund other local authority expenditure. No one has been able to point, though, to a law that prevents external money, such as from City's Estate, being put into the renovation of the corporation's housing stock. It has been said, too, that if the corporation uses City's Estate to supplement its housing revenue account, the government may reduce its grants to the corporation. But with the ultimate source of all government grants being taxpayers, it begs the question: why should taxpayers fund an institution like the corporation that has enough wealth of its own to discharge its functions as a public authority? If the corporation wants to have the power and status of being a public authority, it should spend its quasi-public funds on performing its public functions. Let us also not forget that there is some precedent for the corporation using City's Estate to fund its public functions, although not in relation to residents. In 2021, this Court chose to set up a pandemic recovery fund for small businesses in the Square Mile. Now, it should be the residents' turn. Indeed, speaking as a city resident, before I was elected by the voters of Castle Baynard as a member of this Court, I felt that the corporation viewed us as an inconvenience rather than an asset to the Square Mile, a vexing drain on time and resources, the so-called residential reset notwithstanding.
Deputy, 30 seconds left.
Now that I have been elected, I have seen little in my short time here to persuade me otherwise. I want that to change. With the motion now before us, we have the opportunity to redress this and start repairing the damage, in the case of the residents of Golden Lane and Middlesex Street, literally. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. The motion then is before the Court. I have a healthy number of members wishing to speak. In terms of the effective management of the meeting and your time, I will read who I have. Deputy Chris Haywood, Deputy Henry Colthurst, Jason Pritchard, Steve Goodman, Adam Hogg, Shavan Joshi, Sir William Russell, Deputy John Fletcher, Helen Ladell, Shannon Backt, Deputy Madhush Gupta, Jackie Webster, Susan Farrington, Deputy Anne Holmes, Vasileka Manta, Munza Ali. So if your name has not been mentioned and you wish to speak, please indicate. Chairman of Policy and Resources.
My Lord Mayor, I rise to oppose the motion. I have said repeatedly that I am committed to finding a solution to investment in our housing stock, but this has to be done in a serious way, and we are already moving forward with that solution. We've identified a 10-year investment programme of major works that will address much-needed repairs and maintenance across our estates, including windows, roofing, heating, fire safety and electrical compliance. We estimate that this will cost £205 million over that 10-year period. £105 million is required on the Golden Lane estate alone, with smaller amounts required on our other housing estates, including Avondale, Yorkway, South Bank, William Blake and Middlesex Street. Of the £205 million, £121 million can be funded through the housing revenue account, through prudential borrowing and by leaseholder recharge. And I've tasked the town clerk and his officers to run a viability assessment of all of our estates and to think proactively about what scope there is for intensification, new housing supply, joint venture and government grants, and I believe there is plenty of scope for all of those. This work will begin in July, and it will be completed by the end of September. I need to be clear that the income from our City's Estate investments fund many of our contributions to London and the United Kingdom, including our open spaces, COLAT, our support for Guildhall School of Music and Drama, not to mention the mayoralty and our work on financial and professional services. We can only liquidate assets once, and if the spirit of the motion were enacted, it would reduce income from City's Estate by around £7 million per year. We would need to reduce services to the communities that we serve. This is neither desirable, nor is it necessary, nor would it be fiscally responsible. I therefore urge honourable members to vote against the motion. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Deputy Henry Colthurst.
My Lord Mayor, I must apologise. Despite my best efforts over the last three years to explain our financial position, it appears that some members still do not understand the fragile position of both City Fund and City Estate, and that they are different. Social housing does fall within the City Fund and finds its revenue ring-fenced in the HRA, as has already been said, but we're not the only ones with the problem about housing. A recent estimate assessed the national problem at just under £32 billion. £30 million of our £140 million need has already been budgeted up to the end of 28/29. Officers are looking at the glide path of capital projects to see how to bridge the gap, so the immediate problem is not so much money as speed of delivery. We must keep up pressure on central government for reform of the HRA, as well possibly as the capability of section 106 to support housing. For example, there's an attractive logic to support new commercial developments which boost the Square Mile, which then generate direct funding to support residential provision. We are looking at additional sources of grant funding, and indeed housing development partners. Two estates out of eight might already qualify for new grants available for Homes England and the GLA. Yes, in principle, we could grant large capital funds from City Estate, but is that really sensible for what is essentially a separate, long-term endowment fund? Three points. It is ironic that barely has the dust settled on years of agonising debate to exit the markets, then the vultures appear to descend, just as we should be stabilising its balance sheet. Remember also a basic tenet of capital management: once you spend it, there's nothing left. And no capital equals no income. City Estate supports a number of iconic institutions and promotion of UK financial services. Some members may dislike that role, but they forget the Square Mile contribution to the national purse. Tax revenue depends on economic health, so be careful for what you wish. In my world, such intermingling of funds to allow use of premium monies to pay for things other than insurance claims would be regarded as worse than negligent. And lenders to our public placement reached a similar conclusion. Under its terms, a material transfer of funds could trigger a breach of covenant, forcing immediate repayment of £450 million plus punitive interest charges. Had the motion focused on speed of delivery-
Chairman, 30 seconds, please.
-and how best to develop a 15-year financial plan to support housing, it would have been more meaningful. Had the motion asked how better to achieve value from City Estate expenditure, including that on members and entertainment, I would have welcomed it. Rather, it conflates two important questions in order to justify the wrong answer. Absolutely, we must resolve these housing problems, as problem is as practical, but the answer is not. Oh, we need to spend some money.
Chairman.
Here is a piggy bank-
Chairman, please.
...which supports lots of other things.
We have so-
Let us use that.
Chairman, please.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
We have far too many speakers to get through, and all members, please do keep to time. Jason Pritchard.
My Lord Mayor, we need to stop putting our heads in the sand about the much-needed renovation of our housing estates. There are three facts here, and they're crystal clear. First, the corporation has allowed these estates to fall into disrepair through decades of neglect. Second, the housing revenue account is nowhere near sufficient to reverse that disrepair. Third, the corporation holds significant untapped wealth in its investments within City's Estate. Put those facts together, and the obvious conclusion is this: we should liquidate a small part of those investments to fix the damage caused by years of procrastination and neglect. Frankly, any child at the outstanding Orgate School could reach that conclusion, so why can't we? We must decide: are we the stewards of the city's wealth for the benefit of the people or merely curators of gilded accounts while our tenants continue to live in damp, cold and crumbling homes? My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. Mr. Goodman.
My Lord Mayor, I rise as Chair of the Housing Subcommittee. There's been recognition that we have neglected our housing stock over many years. What are we doing? A world-focused corporation generating business for this country, linking with the government, hosting the French President, while our residents are living in homes with broken windows, outdated heating systems and fast safety equipment, and in some cases mould? So I was extremely happy when the Policy Chair made addressing this situation one of his priorities. Indeed, as Chair of the Housing Subcommittee, along with others, we have frequent meetings with him and key officers, including the town clerk and the chamberlain, driving the improvement programme forward. One result of this is the agreement to move a suggested 20-year improvement programme on Golden Lane to 10 years. He has driven that, and I want publicly to thank him for so doing. And at the moment, let's be clear, the timeframes are not driven by lack of identified funds, but by the complexity of the project. Lifted building status, building regulator, high building registration, I could go on and on. But the fact remains that our estimated cost of £205 million to do what we should have done years ago is currently £85 million short. It may well be, as the Chair of Finance is suggesting, we can close this gap along the lines the Policy Chair has indicated, but this is not yet certain. So it's my view that we would be wrong to close the door on any option, including using our investments. The motion asks us to explore this as an option, and I think along with what we're already doing, what we already have in train, that is the right thing to do. We cannot go round the world selling the Square Mile, being a player on the world stage, whilst at the same time our residents are living in poor housing. It does us no favours, and it's immoral to not place as our highest priority decent homes for our residents. And I totally support the Guildhall School of Music and Drama, but, Policy Chair, how can you say that we've got to carry on supporting them while not yet having a solution to poor housing in the city? So whilst recognising the leadership, the commitment and the passion of our Chair of Policy to sort this long-term issue, I profoundly disagree with him shutting off one possible source of funding that we might need. So on that basis, I will be supportive of the motion. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Adam Hogg.
My Lord Mayor, I congratulate and agree with the Policy Chairman, who is on record saying that the condition of the corporation's housing estates is unacceptable. And for people's knowledge, this is not about the Barbican, I hasten to add. This is about the other estates. As a member for Cripplegate, I speak with knowledge of Golden Lane in particular, which is an appalling state. It is not a question of outstanding minor repairs; there are major faults due to lack of preventative maintenance over more than 20 years. These include rotting window frames, leaking roofs, damp, mould, dry rot and subsidence. Some flats are on the verge of being uninhabitable. This new Court should be alarmed, and I think ashamed, that the corporation's housing estates are in this condition. Over many years, the corporation, freeholder and landlord, has failed to meet its obligations to keep these estates in a proper state of repair. Not only is the corporation's reputation at risk, its failure to meet obligations put it at risk of litigation and risk of prosecution on account of the presence of mould in flats. Urgent and immediate action is necessary, not only to protect the corporation, but for the sake of its residents who've gone through years of uncertainty and living under substandard conditions. Golden Lane is a Grade II listed estate to which we should be proud and not ashamed. There are plans to put this right, which cannot be implemented without funding. The money must be found. The corporation's finances are complex, but if realising other assets is the only way forward, then I support the motion, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mr. Joshi.
My Lord Mayor, I feel slightly disturbed in the way that the motion has created almost a binary decision. a binary decision for us. It's saying we can either support the renewal of our housing, or we have to stop doing all of this work that we're doing through the City Estates. I can't see why we cannot do both, why we must not work to do both, and I feel in that sense that the motion has the wrong terminology about it. This should not be a binary decision that we are making; it should be a joined-up decision we make across the corporation. I'm not going to repeat what the Policy Chair or others have said about financial and professional services and the value that we have in supporting that and the role we have in supporting that. I want to talk about some of the other aspects of the City Estates that we support: the cultural institutions, the heritage that we support, the place-making that we support through our education institutions, like the Guildhall School of Music and Drama, I think now the third-best music school in the world, the educational strategy that we've developed over the years. These are not circumstantial relationships; these have been built up over generations of this court. They are meaningful, and they are part of the ecosystem of this city, and they are meaningful because if we want to draw the best global talent and be the best financial centre in the world, we have to have those vibrant ecosystems thriving around us. And so I say, if we are going to look at a motion and consider this motion, what are we going to cut? Are we going to cut our educational funding? Are we going to cut funds to some of those cultural ambitions that we have? Are we going to stop trying to attract that global talent into the square mile? Are we going to stop funding our open spaces, that impact that we have on the wider London community? The population of London enjoys Epping Forest, Hampstead Heath, Burnham Beaches, and so on, and we cannot give up that responsibility as guardians of those open spaces by looking solely at the renewal of our housing estates. We have to do that, and that's a question I put to Alderman Grecos on how she feels we should cut some of those services that are part of that city's ecosystem. To my mind, what the Policy Chairman has outlined as a scheme of work that is already underway, by looking perhaps at private partnerships, by looking at the private-
Thirty seconds, please, Mr Joshi.
...in partnership with the corporation to deliver the renewal of our housing estates, as well as government grants, those should be the avenues we explore alongside keeping our City Estates intact, and I will not be supporting the motion. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Joshi. Sir William Russell.
My Lord Mayor, I am against the motion. Financial professional services, as many people on the rim know, is fourteen percent of the GDP of this country. The beating heart of this country is the great city of London, employing over two-point-four million people throughout the UK. Cities around the world want to emulate what the city of London provides. We provide help to all the businesses here, financial and professional services around the world. New York want to emulate it, Tokyo do, and even Jacksonville in Florida, just to name a few. If we want to go down this route, as Sharan has just mentioned, Guildhall and the Barbican, our culture side of the city, would struggle. We attract huge amounts of talent because of these institutions, who want to work, as I've said, in the greatest city in the world. I agree, it is appalling, the lack of investment in housing over the last few decades, but we're now starting, as the Chairman of Policy has mentioned, to put that right. However, our biggest stakeholders, no offence to the residents, are the businesses, and of course, older women. Grecos knows that, since she is the older woman of a business ward. The majority of our wards are business wards. Let's not make the mistake of destroying what the rest of the world's great cities would like to have. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Sir William. Deputy John Fletcher.
My Lord Mayor, firstly, can I say I regret that older woman Grecos started her presentation by trying to link this very serious matter of residence with our social programme, linking it with our committee dinners and state banquets. They are separate, and I despise the politics of envy and jealousy, and I think it's a shame she did that. However, despite that, I will be supporting the motion. For me, the key word in the motion is explore. We are being asked to explore a certain path, course of action, and I'm going to find it very difficult going round Middlesex Street Estate in my constituency, seeing residents living in substandard accommodation for years and years, and look them in the eye and tell them that this court was not even prepared to explore selling some of its assets to take them out of the dreadful situation they find themselves living in. So I'm going to be voting in favour, because I believe we should explore the possibility. For those who are against saying, for the sake of according to Crown Jewels, for those who are against selling it, perhaps if this motion were passed, it'll help them focus their minds on finding other alternative funding so we can get the two-hundred-and-five million pounds necessary and get this work done for the benefit of all our residents, and also give members like myself representing residential wards the ability to look our tenants and our residents and our voters in the eye and tell them that this court is doing everything it can to overcome their difficulties. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Ms Helen Liddell.
My Lord Mayor, unlike the Finance Chair, I do not know much about account, but I do know what is right. It is right that we spend money on those who need it and not those who do not, so I support this motion, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Ms Liddell. Shannon Backt, thank you.
My Lord Mayor, I stand before here today as your Chairman of the Investment Committee, but I feel somewhat conflicted. I myself have personal lived experience living in some of these estates, not in the city but other parts of London, in our neighbouring boroughs like Tower Hamlets and Newham, and I know firsthand what these issues are, for me historically, but some of my family members who continue to live in these types of estates. I think we all agree that clearly we should all be ashamed, as Adam said, the condition that we find ourselves in today, with especially Golden Lane Estate, Middlesex Street, and the others that the Chairman of Policy mentioned. I don't feel like we've explored all the options, though, and I don't want to oversimplify it, but I feel like, as sitting here in front of you, leading the Investment Committee, the City Fund, I firmly believe, can explore options, and I would welcome the opportunity to work with Chairman of Finance and Policy, to look at financing options to plug that eighty-five-million-pound gap, because I'm confident we can do that without having to do what we're being asked to do here today. So, as you can gather, I think the motion as we have it in front of us today is something of struggling to support, and I won't be supporting, but I do feel like this is not something that we cannot overcome, and to Sharan's point, we can do both. We can continue promoting the city as it is today, and we can look after the condition of the tenants' housing. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Deputy Madhush Gupta.
My Lord Mayor, honourable members, there is no one in this court who would dispute the importance of decent, dignified housing. But to propose funding renovations by liquidating our endowment is not only financially imprudent, it risks mortgaging the city's future. Every one-hundred-million pounds drawn from our City's Estate reduces our annual income by about four million pounds, in perpetuity. That is four million pounds that we will no less spend each year on Epping Forest, Hampstead Heath, the Barbican Centre, Guildhall School of Music and Drama, or our other good works. None of these are luxuries; they are our enduring public obligations. There is, I fear, a comforting myth surrounding this motion, my favourite topic, the myth of the magical money tree. Let us be candid: stop hugging the tree. The corporation already struggles to meet the commitments it has today. To carve away the capital that sustains us tomorrow without first exhausting smarter alternatives is a council of expedients, not prudence. As your Deputy Chair of Investment Committee, I can say with confidence that this court is not blind to social need. We, as a committee, are actively considering social housing as an impact investment class, not as a gift, but as a prudent, risk-adjusted return to the portfolio that aligns with the city's, London's, and the government's own ambitions. My bank is the preeminent fund of social housing in this country, and it is my bank's mission to grow social housing stock by half a million units. I have facilitated meetings with our own housing sub to explore those opportunities to collaborate. We can and should support social housing, but let's do it in a way that strengthens and not hollows out our financial foundation. I urge this court to oppose the motion, not from indifference, but from a sense of significant responsibility. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Jackie Webster.
My Lord Mayor, I know I can speak for my colleagues in Cripplegate when I say we are driving a bold, ambitious regeneration of our estates, and in particular, Golden Lane, we speak from that experience. Far beyond patching up bricks and mortar, this is about real, joined-up transformation with residents at the centre. It demands long-term investment in people, offices, communities, systems, and building infrastructure. We want to unite key partners to design, test, and scale lasting solutions. Only a full-scale regeneration programme can undo the shameful legacy and damage of historic under-investment and deliver what our communities need now, but also for the future. The current officer team are working hard to deal with this legacy. This court has acknowledged that legacy. There's been a welcome commitment to funding, but now we must show our communities, our offices, and our partners where that funding will come from, and that it will last and deliver, far beyond today. We must commit to infrastructure investment and support for local initiatives and resident-led organisations to build lasting capacity to do good work with us and on behalf of all residents. Policy Chairman, over the last year, you've listened to difficult feedback I've brought to you in your office. We agreed and we committed to action. This isn't just about money; it's about breaking the systems that delay progress, working with our offices, and building a sustainable funding model, not just for today's repairs, but for the next generation. We should explore all options, and this option, but relying solely on asset sales could also be risky and slow. We can't afford to wait. We should be looking at all options for sustainable investment that can be unlocked over the years to ensure this never, ever happens again. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Ms Webster. We have around twenty-seven minutes remaining, just so you are aware. Susan Farrington.
My Lord Mayor, I rise to support this motion, which, as we've heard from many members, addresses a pressing and longstanding issue: the poor condition of the corporation's residential estates. It feels, from what I've heard, that this can has been kicked down the road now for far too long, and I'm intrigued that members have come forward or scrambling with ideas as to how this may be resolved, perhaps too little too late. Let us be clear: the current state of disrepair is not a mystery; it's the result of years of under-investment and neglect. Had the corporation maintained its housing responsibly over the decades, we would not be facing such a significant financial burden. We're told the corporation is already spending on renovations, but when we compare this spending to the scale of need, it is plainly insufficient. In fact, it's hopelessly inadequate. Worse, the pace is so slow that the cost of inaction continues to grow. Some have suggested that there are legal or practical barriers to using City's Estate to fund this work, but no barriers exist; the money is there, the accounts show it. What's missing is the will to use it where it is most needed at the moment. We are urged to act responsibly, I agree, but true responsibility means acknowledging past failures and taking decisive action now. This motion gives us the opportunity to do just that, for the benefit of our residents, whose homes are not just assets on a balance sheet, but the foundation of their lives. Let us not delay further. Let us use some of the resources we have to meet the obligations we have long neglected. I urge the court to support this motion. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Ms Farrington. Deputy Anne Holmes.
My Lord Mayor, I'm very much in favour of considering whether and how we might use more of City Estate monies for announcing our local authority offer. However, I think we've reached the point where we need to carry out risk analyses, we need to establish criteria, and we need to set priorities. In other words, we need a strategy on such use of City Estate monies before we enter into any further allocations. I intend bringing to the July Court a motion proposing setting up a working party to develop such a strategy to bring to this court. Meanwhile, I don't think we should be deciding on further allocations. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. Next, we have Basileke Manta.
My Lord Mayor, at the beginning of every court meeting, we say a prayer which means 'Lord, direct us'. I don't think the Lord is directing us to let residents on our housing estates suffer from underfunding while we spend money on the financial city, who doesn't need it, and even worse, on our own whining and dining. I support this motion, and for the sake of decency, ask all other members to do so too, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Ms Manta. Mr Ali.
My Lord Mayor, firstly, whilst I support the motion in principle, I wish to clarify one important matter. I am a member of Policy and Resources, and I don't like red wine. The main point is there is no doubt that our housing estates are in desperate need of repair. I'm just not completely convinced this is the right and only way, so I wish for us to explore, as we are not going to decide today where that money comes from. My other important is that I worry there may be a tier system created with social housing residents. The Mansfield Street Estate has numerous flats with black mould, damp, leaks, and Chair of PNR, you have visited this, and I welcome any other members to speak to our environmental teams that will verify this as well. We are responsible for the livelihood for all residents, and I want to see how Mansfield Street, in my opinion, the most neglected estate in the city, although it is not a City of London corporation asset, I understand, and I know it's not a competition, will be included in this process, so we are fair to all. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Ali. Alderman Alison Gorman.
My Lord Mayor, I'm standing up in support of the residents in our housing estates. As a social landlord, we need to manage these homes well for our residents, but I oppose this motion. The fact is that I also support many other areas of the City Corporation's work with the same commitment: culture, education, open spaces, and climate action, all funded in whole or part by the City's Estate. Indeed, in this week of climate action, I've been to many events where it's very clear that there is a great respect for the leadership that the City Corporation has been showing, coupled with a request that we continue to do this even in these very unpredictable times. We cannot turn our back on this important role. All of these issues are competing, including climate action, competing for our resources, and they also need to be balanced against the future needs of the city, where we hold these funds in trust for future generations. I believe that there are current and proposed steps being taken to plan for the works on our housing estates, and that these are the best way to proceed, and they will also ensure that we balance the competing demands on our funds. Managing our complex finances is not easy; there are trade-offs and significant risks. There's no one-stop solution. There's no one-stop solution. I believe we need to act as long-term stewards of a finite fund. I will not be supporting this motion. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you Alderman. Ms Caroline Haynes next to speak.
Thank you. My Lord Mayor, I'm afraid like some other members, I can't support this motion. I do feel it is a great pity that it's been worded as it has, and I think other members have verbalised that. Today, I'm just going to focus on one point which has already been referenced to by a number of members, and for those of you that think that I'm more casually dressed today than normal, it's because I wasn't planning to speak. I've been hosting 200 international delegates at the Burnham Beach International Veteran Tree Conference, sponsored by us in partnership with the Ancient Tree Forum, where delegate after delegate spoke of the vital role of the City of London Corporation for 150 years in protecting and sustaining the natural environment, past, present and hopefully into the future. Good quality homes are absolutely vital, but so are other aspects of the corporation lives supported by city estates. And the natural environment is one of those many areas of huge benefit to the public, a core part of the health and wellbeing focus and is internationally renowned along with our other work, which is supported from those areas, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you Ms Haynes. Kerry Wilkins.
My Lord Mayor, sorry for the delay. I welcome this motion and fully support its intent, however, we must remember that over 200 million is needed to fund the required works on the City of London's housing stock. The condition of our housing estates is indeed a matter of serious concern, and accelerating their renovation is both urgent and necessary. Exploring the option of liquidating investments held within the city's estate is a bold but pragmatic step towards ensuring we meet our responsibilities to residents in a timely manner. The work on all of this really commenced when Dawn Frampton was elected and asked the Chair of PNR to join her and I on a walk around the Golden Lane Estate. Can we please ask the Chair to confirm, if not funded by sales, how are we hoping to get the much-needed funds? I also support the call for our relevant committees to act swiftly and bring forward proposals. It is vital that we match our words with action and demonstrate that we are committed to resolving this longstanding issue with the seriousness it deserves. I'd also like to take the time to add a huge thank you to the officers involved who have worked extremely hard so far in the background to try and get these projects off the ground. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you. There was a question in there with regards to a policy issue, and I'm looking at the Chairman to see whether or not you'd want to answer that, given provisions.
My Lord Mayor, I'm very happy to answer the question posed by Kerry Wilkins. I think I've set out in my speech to this Honourable Court today our ability, as far as Golden Lane Estate is concerned, to be able to fund this through the HRA and by prudential borrowing and leaseholder recharges. I said that in my opening comments. So hopefully that gives her the assurance in relation to Golden Lane Estate, which, as she rightly says, I visited with her very early on, on her time on this court. The wider funding, which we've talked about, the 80-plus million which still needs to be found to do the other estates, we've never really done a proper viability assessment as to how we partner with private sector regeneration partners, how we apply for grants, of which there are many opportunities to do so. And my discussions with officers reassure me that we can close that gap and reach the entire amount without the need for supporting this motion today, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you for that clarification. Understanding Order 11, subsection 3. Deputy Mary Ann Fredericks.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I welcome the debate today, so I do thank the Alderman for putting the motion forward. And picking up on the Chair of Finance's points and the Chair of PNR, it does take a motion like this to allow us to focus and discuss debates and find solutions. But this really is a case of déjà vu, because three years ago, Alderman, past Alderman Susan Pearson, who since joining the Court had raised questions frequently at committee and here in the Court, put a motion to the Court. And that motion was actually drafted, thank you very much, by the Assistant Town Clerk, as he was then, and the City Solicitor, which simply said that we ask the Court to explore the use of city cash, as it was then, to expediate our housing projects and our maintenance projects. So the wording has the stamp of officialdom on it, so I believe it is a motion that we can take today. We should really feel ashamed, absolutely ashamed of the state of our housing. I chaired housing for one year and I visited all the estates. At that time, our decent housing programme was 10 years behind, other local authorities had completed theirs. We spoke to residents who were still waiting 20 years on for double glazing. In fact, one lady actually had a sample double glazing in one window, and the rest of the flat was just single glazing. We said in that motion three years ago, just use exploration, just have a look, because when we start to explore, we find solutions, and we really do need to find a solution. In those three years, the costs have escalated, the maintenance projects have increased, dilapidation has got worse, and our residents are really finding it very difficult to understand why the corporation can't spend some of its money to bring their housing stock up. We are their landlords, we have a duty and responsibility to them. Now, we fully support the Barbakun and all the other projects, and it's amazing how we find the money for those projects when we need to. So I will support this, because something has to be done, and until we stop wringing our hands and saying we can't do this, we can't do that, we won't find a solution. And I do welcome the Chairman of Investments' comments, and I think that's the most sensible thing I've actually heard in this Court for a long time, somebody who's actually in charge of our investment.
30 seconds please Deputy.
Who is prepared to find a solution. And to find a solution, we really must. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Anthony Fitzpatrick, next. Thank you.
My Lord Mayor, Honourable Members, it's very rare that I rise in court, but I feel I must do that today. I think there's a consensus that we've all heard, that we know the housing stock is not good, we know that we need to do more for residents. But I'm afraid, I'm not sure the way that the motion is worded delivers what I think the Court wants to deliver. And I would seriously ask the older woman and the seconder if they would consider a slight amendment or withdrawing for today for us to consider some additional wording. We know there are lamentable delays. I know from speaking to residents on the Avondale Estate that I have raised with the Chairman and the Deputy Chairman of Community and Children's Services and with officers, these delays are not good, but we need to do more. But I don't think this motion will do that today. I think it's good we've got reassurance from the Chairman of Policy Resources about the funding. We have to be very clear on the warnings we've had from the Chair of Finance. We cannot just disregard those in the heat of the debate. I think the motion should say that we explore options, all options across the corporation to review options to secure funding for the renovation. But I do not agree and cannot support on the current wording around liquidating investments. The risk is too high. I would please ask for consideration to be given to either amend the current wording or withdraw, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you. We've got a procedural issue here, Mr Fitzpatrick, because we have around 11 minutes left for all of the time allocated for the motion. If you are proposing a formal amendment, we will then have to adjourn for up to five minutes before confirming the amendment and then seeking a seconder, leaving very little time. Of course, we are in members' hands, members could extend the time using the provisions in standing orders two, 2.1 specifically. But alternatively, Mr Fitzpatrick, it could be that you're asking the proposer to reflect on your comments when she sums up at the end.
If it helps, I'm happy to actually propose we extend.
Excuse me, the floor's with Mr Fitzpatrick.
It is a question to you, Town Clerk. May we ask the older woman now, otherwise I would be prepared to pose an amendment?
No, it's not in order to ask her now, you'll need to propose an amendment, and in that circumstance, we would pause for up to five minutes.
Well, let's extend the debate, I think.
Excuse me, Mr Fitzpatrick, sorry. What was that?
May we extend the debate?
Okay, is there a proposal to extend the time of this item by suspending standing orders? The precise standing order would be 12, subsection 6? Yes? To suspend 12, subsection 6 to extend the debate by means of simple majority, but that would need to be seconded by another member before we enter into the vote. Deputy Mary Ann Fredericks to second a proposal to suspend standing order 12, subsection 6 in order to extend the debate. All members to agree on the extension. On the contrary, the motion to extend is defeated. The motion to extend is defeated, we shall move forward.
Sorry, could we do that again slowly, so everybody is aware of when you're calling for and against? Thank you.
Okay, members, there is a motion before you to extend the length of time for debates as defined in standing orders 12, subsection 6. Currently, 60 minutes. And I'm asking, and it's been duly seconded, I'm asking the Court whether or not it is the wish of the Court to extend this item, to extend the motion item time. Okay? And those who do not wish to extend but to continue to conclude in around eight minutes' time. The motion to extend has been defeated.
My Lord Mayor, will it be possible to table an amendment?
Yes, it is possible to table an amendment, understanding orders 11, subsection 7. And to do so, we would need to pause the meeting for up to five minutes to confirm the wording of the amendment before I seek a seconder. Thank you. Thank you. If you can be seated. So the amendment before the Court is that this Honourable Court resolves that the city corporation explores all options to fund the acceleration of the renovation of its housing estates, as their continuing dilapidation is an ongoing scandal. This Court accordingly further resolves that its relevant committees be instructed now to bring forward proposals as to how this can be achieved as soon as possible. Now, members, you have already said you are not minded to support an extension, so I propose that we go straight to the vote on the amendment before. Do you have a seconder? Sir Michael Snyder, thank you. So Alderwoman Martha Greco is raising a point of order.
So understanding order 11.5 provides that any amendment shall not have the effect of negating the motion, and I believe this plainly negates the motion before us, because it talks about exploring all options and in effect removes the city estate. This is meant to be all about the city's estate. Can I finish? Am I allowed to speak? Thank you. So the motion relates, the original motion relates to the city's estate, it does not relate to any other fund. So removing a reference to that turns this motion into something entirely different. The member can, if he so wishes, put this motion at the next court meeting if he gets the required numbers of signatures, but he should not be hijacking this one. Thank you.
Thank you Alderwoman Greco. Having consulted with the Lord Mayor, the point of order is not accepted, understanding order 11, subsection 5. So, as I was saying, members, there is an amendment before you. Very, very quickly, I shall read again. That this Honourable Court resolves that the city corporation explores all options to fund the acceleration of the renovation of its housing estates, as their continuing dilapidation is an ongoing scandal. This Court accordingly further resolves that its relevant committees be instructed now to bring forward proposals as to how this can be achieved as soon as possible. So there is an amendment before you. In the usual way, we'd have debates, but we don't have the time. However, and given we are out of time, Alderwoman Greco, you do have a right of reply as the person who's proposed the original motion. So given we have one minute left, would you want to do that, or do you want to try to expedite matters? To the proposed amendment, you have a right of reply on that. But obviously, we have got some time pressures with regards to the original motion as well. So as you're aware, we haven't extended under 12.6. Thank you Alderwoman Martha Greco. So you have the amendment before you, and we will move to vote on the amendment. All in favour of the amendment? On the contrary, the amendment is carried. So we now move, given that we are out of time, to Alderwoman Martha Greco as the proposer of the motion. to Alderwoman Martha Grecos as the proposer of the original motion as amended now to close. And you have five minutes to do so, Alderwoman. Thank you very much.
Right, I sent an email to all members a couple of days ago warning them about disinformation that made them hear about this motion and explaining why it was disinformation. It is a measure of the lack of arguments and the hijacking of this motion, which I will address in a minute, of those who oppose this that they have simply repeated some of the disinformation in this debate. I will not spend time again rebutting arguments that are legal or practical difficulties with using the city's estate. There simply aren't, and I refer you all to the email that I sent around. I will just add that the Finance Chair, Alder Russell, and councillor Joshi talked up the benefits of the financial city to the nation. They imply this is somehow due to the corporation funding out of the city's estate. It isn't. The financial city can easily afford to fund its own promotion. It doesn't need our monetary, to quote councillor Gupta, which is indeed magical, as it always produces cash for members' privileges, but not for the residents' crumbling homes. And councillor Holmes wanted a strategy assessment, but the wording of the original motion was wide enough to encompass this. Now, I was not given notice of the ambush amendment until, what, a mere five minutes ago? Although those moving it had plenty of time to discuss it with me beforehand.
My Lord Mayor.
Mr Fitzpatrick, is there a point of order?
There is a point of order.
Alderwoman, we must give way to it.
I object strongly to the word hijacking and ambush being used. I would respectfully request that that be taken back.
This amendment clearly seeks to draw attention away from using the city's estate to fund the acceleration of the renovation of the corporation's housing estate. The problem is that the city estate is the only credible source of funds available. Our local authority general fund, called the City Fund, is like the housing revenue account itself under pressure. It should, in any case, be used for other local authority purposes. City's estate, by contrast, is not used for anything like as important as renovating our estates. It is used to fund the promotion of the financial city, which I've already said can easily afford to promote itself, and to fund, of course, the member privileges. So this motion is a mere deflection. The city's estate has become a sacred cow in the corporation. Suggesting it can be used for better purposes is akin to heresy. It is time for this irrational taboo to be broken. I will vote against this spoiler amendment and urge members who genuinely care about the city residents as opposed to maintaining the status quo to do likewise. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Having consulted with the Lord Mayor, we accept the point of order with regards to language and remind members that, understanding order 11 subsection 15, inappropriate language and inappropriate behaviour is strictly prohibited. We will now move to the vote on the motion as amended. And to remind you, members, that this Honourable Court resolves that the City Corporation explores all options to fund the acceleration of the renovation of its housing estates as their continuing dilapidation is an ongoing scandal. This Court accordingly further resolves that its relevant committees be instructed now to bring forward proposals as to how this can be achieved as soon as possible. That, members, is to agree. On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. Moving then, members, to item 10, where the right Honourable, the Lord Mayor, has received notice of five questions. Firstly, Alderman Robert Hughes-Penny to ask a question of the Chairman of the Investment Committee.
My Lord Mayor, the investment world has changed materially over the last two or three years in the way it is considering and applying the ESG agenda. In particular, there have been questions about the economic cost of the green and net zero priorities and how these have caused a drag on economic performance and growth. In addition, there is the question as to whether defence stocks should continue to be excluded as part of ESG filters in the light of increasing geopolitical tensions. Please can the Chair update the Court on the ESG policies as they relate to aerospace and defence stocks that the Investment Committee has put in place for asset managers responsible for running the corporation's assets and investment portfolios? Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman, the Chairman of the Investments Committee.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Alderman for giving me notice of his question. And may I begin by congratulating him on his election as Sheriff this week and he will be a great ambassador for the city and I look forward to working with him alongside Keith on what I'm sure will be an exciting Shreveall year. Members, this is a timely question, coming not only during Armed Forces Week, but also following the UK's new national security strategy that has only just been announced. To defend or not to defend, I suppose that is the question. Now, on the point of ESG that the Alderman raises as they relate to the Investment Committee's investments, yes, one may argue that energy transition comes at a cost. But my view is that this is a short-term drawback and that well-governed companies should see it as a path to long-term value creation. That is to say, on a net basis, incorporating ESG into investment decision-making can be achieved with positive investment returns. Now, your Investment Committee sets long-term strategy and it's our appointed fund managers who we expect to deliver investment performance. And it's important to note here that they make the stock picks, not us. And I alongside, sorry, members of your Investment Committee expect them to carefully factor ESG risks and opportunities into their decision-making. On the topic of aerospace and defence specifically, what I can report to the Alderman today and members of this Court is that we do not exclude the sector. This is consistent with market trends where national security is now seen by some managers as part of sustainability. That being said, naturally, stock-level filters that fund managers employ do vary, as does the definition of what actually constitutes defence. To give you an example, the MSCI flags Mercedes-Benz as a defence stock because of its military vehicles produced by Daimler. Moving to our fund managers, one excludes firms earning over 20% of their revenue from weapons manufacturing, whilst another operates with that threshold set at 5%. And since we invest via pooled funds, and it's important to note, these are pooled funds that we invest in, where we are commingled with other investors, we do not and cannot impose stock-level rules. But we do engage with our managers regularly to ensure alignment with the corporation's values, including our responsible investment.
Chairman, thirty seconds, please.
So in summary, your Investment Committee works with expert fund managers to integrate ESG, including defence, into a long-term strategic asset allocation strategy. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Alderman, do you have a supplementary question?
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Chair for the answer that he provided and I'm grateful to him as well for his good wishes. We, as a Court, don't often have questions posed of the Chair of the Investment Committee. But it is really important to do so because driving investment returns is a vital part of balancing the budget that is often overlooked. Indeed, a 1% improvement in returns could make all the difference in any number of areas. So please can the Chair tell the Court whether the investment managers and the bankers that we employ have any policies which exclude lending or otherwise servicing aerospace and defence companies? And I'm specifically referring to the banks that we use. As we reflect and ask these questions, I'm mindful of the UK Defence and Economic Growth Task Force that has been stood up by the CBI and Oliver Wyman. This initiative seeks to recommend how the UK can maximise growth and productivity alongside building priority defence capability alongside our European cousins, neighbours and allies. This would draw on the city's wonderful FPS ecosystem and pools of capital for safety, security and the common good. As such, we, the city, must make sure our own house is in order, our investment policies are...
Thirty seconds, please, Alderman.
And that we are not in danger of shooting ourselves in the foot through policies we are not aware of. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, thank you to the Alderman for his supplementary question and I agree with everything he said. And it's good to know that we've been missed. He will be pleased to hear that I plan to take an active role in engaging our fund managers on many pertinent topics, including defence strategy. Now, as of the 30th of May, our equity portfolio is managed by six pooled equity funds, two focused on the UK, four global. Roughly 2.1% of our investments through these managers is invested in aerospace and defence-related stocks. This is ever so slightly below market benchmarks. For instance, the FTSE All Share allocates 3.1% to defence-related stocks. Now, the difference can be attributed to many factors and it's not necessarily driven by ESG filters. And it's also worth noting that the defence sector is typically seen as a cyclical market exposure. And to the Alderman's point, with the CBI and Oliver Wyman UK Defence and Economic Growth Task Force that he refers to, this is particularly relevant. As I expect, we will now begin to see an increase in investment into the defence supply chains, which in turn, I expect, will manifest in our 2.1% exposure to also increase. Next, turning to the question about the corporation's banking providers. Our core banking partner, as you would expect, does not fund companies linked to prohibited weapons. And for nuclear weapons, it only finances projects tied to UK, US and French national defence. That aside, it does work with the broader defence sector, subject, of course, to strict due diligence criteria, including anti-corruption controls and export licensing. And I know from personal experience that many banks are now taking a much more active role in playing their part in fortifying the defence supply chain. And finally, on the point of banking partners, in our short-term Treasury management strategy, again, we do not exclude counterparties. So I trust this provides sufficient colour about our exposure to the sector and engagement and I look forward to engaging with you, the Alderman, and the Court on this importance going forward. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr Brooker.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I thank the Alderman for what is probably the best word in the city for his leadership and question, last court and this Court. Us playing our part in our national defence is absolutely crucial, as I've said before. I would also like to thank the Chairman of the Investment Committee for his proactive approach. And my question would be, as would he join the policy chairman who last court said that he would be supportive of exploring initiatives for a multilateral defence bank? And would he commit to using his own experience and that of his committee to support that initiative? My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Brooker. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, the answer to that, those questions would be yes and wholeheartedly yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, Deputy Madhush Gupta.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. As most people in this room know, my employer, Lloyds Banking Group, is the banker to the corporation. And yes, the Lloyds Banking Group does bank defencing stocks and we do so with ethical and considerations. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Chairman.
Not sure there was a question there, but nothing to add. Agree.
Agreed works. Agreed works. Mr Groves.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Alderman for raising this important question and he and I have spoken about defence in this Court previously. The Government Strategic Defence Review that was published earlier this month talks about a landmark shift in the UK's deterrence in defence, moving to a warfighting readiness to deter the threats to our security and the security of Europe. I take what the Chairman of the Investment Committee says about defence being a cyclical stock, but I think the mood music now has changed so significantly that we need to look at this. The Alderman raised very important issues about the role that the city is going to play in rapidly scaling up our defence capabilities. And I hope very much that, unlike previous efforts in that area, that actually financial services will play an increasing role in enabling us to scale up our defence capabilities at pace. I think, given that, I'm heartened by what the Chairman of the Investment Committee says, but will he encourage our investment managers, given that this is indeed a landmark shift, to look again at the policies? Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Groves. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, yes, great question, Jason. And to clarify my remarks earlier, I'm not meaning to say that we will specifically focus on the beta exposure that we have currently already, that 2.1% I referred to. We are actively engaging our managers on this topic alongside many others. And I agree that many institutions, and I'm pleased to see not only our core banking partner, as my deputy has mentioned, but many other prominent investment banks in the city are actively pushing and working on providing capital to defence-related supply chains. I expect that will continue and grow and, of course, as a committee, we will be involved in that dialogue. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Next, Josephine Hayes.
My Lord Mayor, I wish to ask the Chairman something about the second sentence of the original question from Alderman Hughes-Penny. That sentence reads, "In particular, there are questions about the economic cost of the green and net zero priorities and how these are causing a drag on economic growth." Would the Chairman agree that that is merely a question and it's not an assertion? And that it should not be assumed that green and net zero policies are a drag on economic growth? And would he agree that this is something to be considered very carefully in view of the enormous cost of climate change?
Thank you, Ms Hayes. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, yes, I absolutely agree with that statement. And again, the ESG framework is something that we very actively incorporate into our decision-making processes and we work alongside many colleagues here today on topics around net zero, climate change and anything to that effect as it relates to the defence sector specifically as well. I guess that answers your question, I hope, but my point is, yes, yes and yes, we do absolutely factor this into consideration and they will continue to play a very important part. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Next is Tim McAnally to ask a question of the Chairman of the Culture, Heritage and Libraries Committee.
My Lord Mayor, when inquiring about having a blue plaque put on the site of the former Fletcher's Hall in St Maryaxe, I was told that. I regret to inform you that the scheme is currently paused and not accepting new applications as we await a future review of the scheme's resources, funding and criteria. The timescales for this review have yet to be established. Can the Chairman please let me know when this important way of visually recording the history of the City of London will be resumed?
Thank you, Mr McAnally. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Honourable Member for notice of his question. I share his interest and passion for blue plaques. The city's Blue Plaque Programme currently operates as a cross-departmental process. It is administered, implemented and maintained by the Heritage Estates Team, which is in City Surveyors. The application, assessment and recommendations are referred to the City Arts Initiative, which is under the Town Clerk's Department, in the Culture SROs we met. And final decision-making is with the CHL Committee. As the Honourable Member has noted, currently the programme is unfortunately suspended due to oversubscribed applications and a lack of resource to clear the backlog. The Heritage Estates Team manage a large proportion of the city's wider collection of heritage assets and currently exist as a team of two officers. So the amount of time that they are able to allocate to blue plaque applications is, from my perspective, not as much as we require or would like. And on the basis of resource allocation, I understand that the current backlog would take around five years to clear unless new resources and budget are identified. Clearly, this is no reflection on the officers who work very hard to protect our heritage assets. However, it does suggest we have not got the balance right in allocating the appropriate resources to support their resources to support their work. In order for the Blue Plaque Scheme to reboot, a fundamental rethink is required and is long overdue. What is it trying to achieve? How should the scheme be funded? And how will new plaques fit within the corporation's wider cultural offer and our forthcoming cultural strategy? We need the right expertise to guide decisions, particularly around contested heritage, in order that we can fully celebrate what positive contributions the scheme could and should provide. While it is for members collectively to determine the final form of our new cultural strategy, it is my personal view that heritage will form an integral part of the final proposition, and that the Blue Plaque Scheme in a refreshed and revitalised form will be a key part of it. So we need a robust business plan that the Chairman of Finance and the Policy Chair can support in order for the Blue Plaque Programme to resume and sustain itself successfully.
Chairman, thirty minutes, thirty seconds, rather.
There is huge potential.
That caught you out, didn't it?
Good enough, only thirty minutes. There's huge potential for the programme. We are looking at other councils, particularly Westminster Council, who operate a green plaque scheme. They have a very transparent system, they charge three and a half thousand pounds plus VAT, and the whole process is done normally within two to three years. So I think we can learn from what others are doing. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. McAnally, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, yes, my Lord Mayor. I thank the Chairman for his response. Does he think it's consistent with the promotion of arts, culture and history in this ancient city for the corporation to seem to have tried to dissuade people for applying for blue plaques by quoting sums between five and twelve thousand pounds? And when even this failed to stop applications coming in, despite five thousand pounds being five times the average for other local authorities, which normally charge about a thousand pounds, which one might think in itself, given the plaques only cost about forty-five pounds to make, the corporation are now refusing any applications at all and are agreeing to deal with the backlog at the rate of only three per year, which seems a bit ridiculous? Does the Chairman agree that, like other local authorities, someone from City Surveyors tasked with dealing with blue plaque applications could probably do so in half a day a week? And that a more reasonable charge closer to the national average might promote even more applications? And it is strange that, unlike most authorities, the City of London is not promoting and celebrating the famous people who have lived here and the locations of events that have happened here in our great city. Will the Chairman agree that blue plaques bring tour groups around the city, lead to additional trade for our hospitality sector and our guides, and will he work with the Chair of Policy Resources to try and break the logjam on this issue? My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McAnally. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, there's quite a lot of figures being thrown around there. I think there's no reason why this scheme can't actually be self-funding, that the applicants fund the applications, they'll actually pay for the plaques to be made. I think they're a little bit more than forty pounds. If you've noticed, the blue plaques in the city are a little bit different to the other plaques. We do have a hundred and seventy of them in the city, so we're capable of doing it. For whatever reason, it does seem to have fallen into what I sometimes call a bit of a corporate blockage. But the Honourable Member can be absolutely assured that that is going to be unblocked. He has my commitment. And that when the cultural strategy launches, which will be in the first half of next year, blue plaques will be a central part of it. And he's absolutely right. I want to encourage people to tell the stories of our great city, the people that have lived here and made it what it is, and the buildings that we all admire as we walk around the city. It's right that we should be celebrating blue plaques. In terms of numbers, actually Westminster City Council, on average, only does one to two a year. So actually, we're not talking about huge numbers here. In terms of the backlog, there's ten, as I understand it. There are ten applications that we need to get through, and he has my commitment that I think we should find a way of getting through those on a much faster basis than five years.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Pritchard.
My Lord Mayor, I just wanted to piggyback actually on Tim's question. I know you talked about unblocking blue plaques and getting them rolling again. Well, my ward of Portsookeins has got a rich history, and we do not have one single blue plaque in our ward. It's really amazing that we don't have one, because as I said, Petticoat Lane, there's so much history in our ward. So can I just ask you, please, also, look at the east of the city and maybe try and unblock that, because we've never ever had any blue plaques? Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, it's a very good suggestion. Perhaps the Honourable Member would like to meet with me, and as part of the relaunch of the cultural strategy, perhaps we can make it a priority that his area gets a long overdue blue plaque. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Moving on, Deputy Madhush Gupta to ask a question of the Chairman of the Policy and Resources Committee.
My Lord Mayor, in the square mile, where global finance meets world-class ambition, mobile networks continue to promise us Lamborghinis, yet often deliver clapped-out old bangers. Recent independent tests show that nearly forty percent of the time, when a phone claims to be on 5G, it's actually running on 4G or less. This digital mirage is not merely misleading, it is commercially damaging. High speed, always available connectivity is the critical lubricant of business in our city. Global markets, fintech innovation, trading floors, all depend on fast, reliable data. Yet, too often, residents, workers, our visitors, find themselves unable to even open a WhatsApp message, let alone conduct business-critical functions. Each person here knows what I mean. We're paying for premium services, but where is the premium performance? I would urge that this matter is taken up as a matter of urgency. Will you hold mobile network operators to account to deliver the connectivity that the world's leading financial centre expects and deserves? My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy. The Chairman of Policy and Resources.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Honourable Member for giving me notice of his question. Being a world-class city, as we are, means that we should have world-class connectivity for those who work, live in and visit our square mile. As Deputy Gupta rightly points out, though, Ofcom are always showing the city to have full coverage, but we know that those connecting to 5G in the square mile are not always getting 5G delivered. That's because, I'm told, that much like when using the wifi at home, the connection slows as it is shared between more people. That means that whilst your phone is connected to a 5G mast, it isn't achieving 5G speeds. The solution is to improve wireless connectivity and capacity. The City Corporation is currently deploying 5G equipment across the square mile that can be used by all mobile operators to improve network coverage and the much-needed capacity, meaning there should be more actual 5G across the square mile. The rollout is currently ongoing and is likely to take another 12 to 18 months to complete. If all the networks do use this equipment as it goes live, it would mean improved 5G speeds across the square mile. So I say to the Honourable Member that I will ask officers to write to each of the four network providers, informing them of this new infrastructure that they should utilise to enhance mobile connectivity within our city. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Deputy, do you have a supplementary question?
I do not.
Thank you. Moving on then. Ah, I'm very, very sorry. Mrs. Syed, thank you.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Just adding on to that, when the last update occurred, Farringdon Without, and in particular the temples, were overlooked, I'd be very grateful if, as part and parcel of this wifi upgrade that the city's commissioned, that the temples are included in that. I'd be very grateful. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Syed. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Honourable Member. I give her my personal assurance that I will ensure that officers, in particular, make specific reference to the temples, so that they should be included in that, so that you're not overlooked. I'm sorry that happened in the past. We'll try and make sure it doesn't happen again. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Deputy Tom Slay.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. Would the Policy Chairman agree with me that the City Plan 2040, our local plan, which has recently been inspected by His Majesty's inspectors, and which we hope will soon be fully endorsed therefore, and come into full material weight in our planning decisions, in Policy IN1, it is now, and it is innovatively allowing for digital telecommunications infrastructure to be present and installed into new developments, which is a huge step forward in enabling this kind of activity that we've heard from the question. So would the Policy Chair agree with me that that's an innovative and forward-thinking solution, and that the City Plan is an example of how the City Plan works really well in action?
Thank you, Deputy Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Chairman of the Planning and Transportation Committee for his incredibly helpful intervention and question. He's right, of course, the new City Plan will call for new developments to be designed in ways that can easily accommodate digital infrastructure, which will make it easier for telecom providers to install 5G infrastructure. And I understand, Chairman, that your planning officers work collaboratively with providers to seek creative solutions for the square mile. So I congratulate you on the work that you and they are doing, and I'm sure it will bear fruit. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Groves.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. The Chairman rightly talks about the strain on 5G when a lot of people are around. For those of us who represent wards which are very close to popular tourist destinations, such as the Tower of London, that can pose restrictions on the way that workers are able to access 5G, particularly at very busy times of the year. And of course, many of those tourists then want to stay and see the wonderful works of Tower Ward as well. In addition to Farringdon Without, would the Chairman also agree to look at areas around sites of big tourist importance, particularly the Tower of London? My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groves. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Honourable Member for his question, and he speaks, of course, for yet another fine ward. Having heard Farringdon Without, now we hear, of course, of Tower Ward. Yes, of course, I will work to ensure that all full twenty-five wards in the city hopefully can benefit. But I take his point, that in wards where there are particular focuses of tourist attractions, such as the Tower of London, that becomes particularly important. But I will assure all members, we will try to make sure that all wards get the full benefits, including, of course, the best ward in the city, Broad Street Ward. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Deputy Fredericks.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I obviously agree with Jason. Don't try using your mobile phone when the London Marathon's on, because everyone runs with these little mobile phone bits and you can't get a signal. But there's a wider problem, because also the tall buildings are actually blocking signals, so we have dead zones. Mark Lane is a complete cut-off, because we're by so many tall buildings and they're increasing. We are completely in the valleys constantly with signals cutting off. But residents themselves are finding it very difficult to actually have the fibre optics installed, because we have limited number of residents and the companies find it very expensive. So we might be the most important city in the world, the financial heart of the country, but residents and businesses find it incredibly difficult with the wifi, as well as fibre optics and built-in broadband. Our infrastructure is completely lacking. So I would hope that we'll be encouraging developers to look at installing that infrastructure when they are developing in certain areas, and I hope the Chair of Planning would agree with that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Deputy. Chairman.
Well, I'm sure the Chair of Planning will address the matter that the Honourable Member for Tower Ward raises. I think it's very important that we don't blame the tall buildings, right? There's tall buildings in other big cities of the world where we do not get this problem. The problem is the infrastructure. That is what has to be tackled, and that is what I said in my response to the Chairman of Planning and Transportation a few moments ago. It's about what 5G is about solving, not the challenge of having tall buildings alone, because it works in other cities, we need it to work in ours. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. I think we are clear now on this question, in which case we will move to Mr. John Foley to ask a question of the Chairman of the Policy and Resources Committee. Mr. Foley.
Thank you. My Lord Mayor, on May the 8th last month, the city celebrated the 80th anniversary of FE Day, the date marks the end in 1945 of the Second World War in Europe. However, the war was far from over. It continued in the Pacific and South East Asia for more than three months. The end of that war, the official end of the Second World War, is commemorated annually on August the 15th as VJ Day. VJ Day is also a reminder of the several hundred thousand British, Commonwealth and Allied forces still at war in the Far East, who somewhat out of the spotlight here in Britain, became known as the Forgotten Army. Does the corporation have any plans to mark this 80th anniversary, either here in the city, or with representation at a national ceremony, or perhaps with a contribution to a relevant charity? My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Honourable Member for giving me notice of his question, and I'm pleased to assure Honourable Members that in this case I can give a relatively brief answer and response to a very important question. With this week being Armed Forces Week, this is a very good and timely question to be asking Honourable Member Foley, if I may say so. And you are right, of course, to highlight that FE Day was not the end of the Second World War, and that the 15th of August marks the 80th anniversary of the official end of World War II, VJ Day. We must never allow for British, Commonwealth and Allied personnel who fought and who died in the Pacific theatre of the war to be forgotten. Events will be taking place across the country, including a service at the National Memorial Arboretum, and residents are encouraged to organise street parties and community gatherings as well. A service is likely to take place in Great St Bartholomew's Church in the city, and we are waiting for more information to be sent through to us on that service. Once I know more, I will ensure that that information about this service is communicated to all Honourable Members. My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Foley, do you have a supplementary question? No, thank you. Any other questions? No. And finally then, Munshiya Ali to ask a question, again, of the Chairman of Policy and Resources. Mr. Ali.
My Lord Mayor, does the Chair of Policy and Resources agree we risk being complicit as an organisation by being silent when we have been so vocal during Ukraine and Russia conflict, providing funds for Ukraine, raised flags, held vigils in the city and much more, as well as holding a one-minute silence immediately after the horrific event of October the 7th, therefore being inconsistent, damaging the reputation and real democratic independence of this historic organisation to speak out boldly? And will he be bold enough to lead the organisation in finally speaking out and to condemn without diluting by specifically acknowledging the killings of Palestinians, including their children, the destruction of homes, the hospitals and places of worship? My Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ali. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, this is a sensitive question, and I thank Mr. Ali for speaking to me ahead of the meeting to frame it to me. I have to say to him, to the Honourable Member, I do not agree that the City Corporation is complicit, as the Honourable Member's question phrases it, in the terrible situation in the Middle East. Honourable Members may not be aware that the City Corporation has donated fifty thousand pounds to the Disasters Emergency Committee Middle East Appeal, which provides food, medicines and shelter in Gaza, Lebanon and the West Bank. On the matter of flag raising, I've said before that these are matters on which we follow the direction of national government. Of course, we can always change that, it's within members' power to change it, but that has been our custom and practice in this city in the past. Similarly, I have to say, and I've said it many times in this chamber, it is for His Majesty's Government to decide on foreign policy, not for us as elected members. Honourable Members will no doubt have a range of views on this difficult and highly emotive issue, and I wouldn't dream of attempting to speak on behalf of any of you. As I said in my policy statement following the October the 7th attacks, I affirm our commitment to supporting our friends, staff... commitment to supporting our friends, staff and people in all the communities we serve. And I ask Members then to join me in praying for a lasting peace, as I do again today, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr Ali, do you have a supplementary question? Thank you.
My Lord Mayor, whilst this is not an easy subject to discuss, and it's been quite harrowing in fact to be standing here as well to raise issues, can the Chair of Policy and Resources give us assurances that raising questions like this, specifically where thousands of Jewish people are condemning and questioning Israel, including Israeli Jews, will not be fear-mongered into being labelled as anti-Semitic and help remove that veil of fear, my Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Ali. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, it's not for me, I think, to tell the Honourable Member what questions he can or can't ask in this chamber, that must be for every individual Member to decide. But corporately, we have adopted the, as he knows, the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance definition of antisemitism into the Members' Code of Conduct, and I think it's important that all Honourable Members familiarise themselves with its content, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Next is Mercy Hagerty.
My Lord Mayor, we are watching the first ever livestreamed genocide of the Palestinian people. I think it's incumbent upon us to echo the words of Minister Faulkner in the chamber just this month, when he asked the world to agree with Canada, with France, that Israel must change course. I think it's incumbent upon us to back our government in calling for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Hagerty. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Honourable Member for her supplementary question. These are matters for the House of Commons to debate and to opine on. They are matters of government, foreign policy, and I do not think it is helpful for us to take as independent members of the corporation a specific policy line. We all have individual opinions, we are not party political, we're not part of any administration in this corporation. And whilst I am sympathetic to the point she makes that was made in the House of Commons, I reiterate what I've said before, that foreign policy is a matter for His Majesty's Government.
Thank you, Chairman. Next, Mr Philip Kelvin.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. While I of course support the death of any civilian across the global conflicts, including those in the Middle East and the Palestinian people, I do disagree with the attempts to shame the City of London into taking sides in these complex, of which is a complex and unfortunately ongoing war between a sovereign state and an UK ally and a prescribed terrorist organisation, Hamas, which, as the Honourable Member noted, following the terrorist attack on October the 7th, murdered 1,200 people and still hold 50 hostages, of which 27 are still believed to be alive. So will the Chairman of Policy and Resources continue to reiterate that this is an independent court of the City of London, and we do not take views on substantive matters related to foreign affairs, which are reserved for His Majesty's Government, my Lord Mayor?
Okay, Members, we have a minute and a half before we end question time. Chairman.
My Lord Mayor, I thank the Honourable Member for his supplementary question, and I think frankly, he framed in his question the answer actually that I had just given to this court, so let me say once and for all, it is for the foreign policy led by the Foreign Secretary to determine policy on our approach to foreign affairs across the world. And of course, we condemn all atrocities across the world. It is not the Policy Chairman of the City of London Corporation to make those policy statements, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I see you have your hand raised, Mr Ali, it's not in order for you to come back in, understanding Order 13.6. Final question will be Josephine Hayes.
My Lord Mayor, would the Chairman of Policy and Resources confirm that he's not suggesting that the City of London was wrong to take the side of Ukraine in the way that has been mentioned in the original question?
Very quickly, Chairman, we're out of time, thank you.
My Lord Mayor, I'm happy to confirm that, it was the government who took that approach, and we followed the government's lead, as we always do on such matters, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Members, we are officially out of time anyway, understanding Order 13.9. We will proceed now to Item 11 on page 37, which is a report on measures introduced into Parliament which might have an effect on the City Corporation this Members is to receive. At Item 12, the results of the several ballots undertaken at the last court are set out at the summons on pages three and four, that is to receive. At Item 13, the Chief Commissar.
My Lord Mayor, Honourable Members will, I'm sure, have been delighted to observe that a number of Members and officers were recognised in His Majesty's Birthday Honours list earlier this month for their contributions to the City and the City of London Corporation. I'm certain that Members would wish to join me in commending their achievements, which with the Court's leave and in the interests of efficiency, I shall put to the Court together. It therefore gives me enormous pleasure to move that the sincere congratulations of this Court be offered to my friend Alderman Prem Goyal CBE, on his recent appointment by His Majesty the King as a commander of the Most Excellent Order of the British Empire for public service. I'm also really delighted to move that the congratulations of this Court be offered to Ian Dyson CBE, formerly Commissioner of the City of London Police, on his recent appointment by His Majesty the King as a commander of the Most Excellent Order of the British Empire for his charitable and voluntary services and services to policing. I'm very pleased to move the congratulations of this Court to Helen Reed MBE, Conservation Officer at Burnham Beaches in Stoke-on-Telmo, on her recent appointment by His Majesty the King as a member of the Most Excellent Order of the British Empire for her services to conservation and arboriculture. And finally, I move that the congratulations of this Court be offered to Daniel Lopez MBE, a member of the City Corporation's Competitive Advisory Board, on his recent appointment by His Majesty the King as a member of the Most Excellent Order of the British Empire for services to international trade and the City of London, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. The Chairman of the Finance Committee.
My Lord Mayor, I'm delighted to second these motions, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. That is to agree?
Ooh.
On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried unanimously and invites Members to congratulate their colleagues and officers in the usual manner. At Item 14, there is no report. Fifteen, there are no dockets for the seal. We turn now to Item 16 and the motion to exclude the public. The Right Honourable the Lord Mayor has been informed of several matters for consideration after the public have been withdrawn from the meeting, and the Chief Commissar has placed a motion on the summons to exclude the public whilst the items are considered. Is the motion seconded? The Chairman of the Finance Committee.
My Lord Mayor, I'm very happy to second the motion.
Thank you, Chairman. To agree? On the contrary, the Lord Mayor declares the motion to be carried. Will Members of the public and officers in the public gallery kindly withdraw, and could the livestream please be ended?